We are recording. Okay, so, welcome everybody to the June 25th. I had a look at the calendar. The June 25th Village Board meeting for the Village of Woodbury. I will start as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. All right, so, we will start off with public comment on agenda items only. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say about anything on the agenda this evening before we get started with administrative business? Sandy, Robin, anybody?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Let's see, Mr. Higgins joined us, anybody? Okay, now we'll move on to administrative business. I need a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held June 11th, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, that was Andrew with a second by, uh, excuse me, that was Jesus with a second by Andrew. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Andrew's muted, does he know that?
Yeah, he knows, he raises his hand and indicated with a no. Okay, approval of abstract, need a motion in a second to approve abstract number two containing vouchers 200082 through 200146 totaling $110,222.71.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Burek.
My second.
Andrew with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Never aye. Okay, slate of officers for the Woodbury Fire Chiefs, I need a motion in a second to approve the following slate of Fire Chiefs as voted in by the membership of the Woodbury Fire. Pasquale Brazillo for car one, Christopher Burke for car two, and Scott McLennan for car three.
I make that motion.
Trustee Gomes with a second by trustee Gomez, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to old business. Appointments to the Comprehensives Plan Committee, so last week on Tuesday and Thursday evening, we interviewed a bunch of people for the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and we think we're gonna have a great committee here. So I need a motion in a second to appoint the following individuals to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Robin Kraus, Joe Zlata, Pat Rafferty, Ray Cooper, and Sue Lamato.
Make that motion.
Trustee Derek with the motion.
I'll, go ahead.
Trustee Gomez with the second, any discussion?
Uh, on the, on the question, um, I would like to make sure that we add Karen Ungara and Chris Gerber to that committee as the Planning and Zoning Board reps.
Well, that's actually the next statement, these are the appointments to the committee, and I'll get to that in just a second.
Okay, good, okay.
No worries. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Never aye. So, the Village Board liaison is gonna be trustee Graziano, the Planning Board liaison will be Chris Gerber, and the zoning board liaison will be Karen Ungar, so, perfect.
There you go.
Okay, approval of change order for water sewer prefab metal storage building. I need a motion in a second to approve change order number one for the project known as prefabricated metal storage building totaling a reduction to the contract amount of $65,166.27 for the following reason, per engineer Lindsay, who is on this evening and can explain further if need be. Due to the availability of Central Hudson and Gas Electric to complete a new gas service work, the contractor was advised the paving portion of the contract was to be removed. The contractor is to be reimbursed for the overhead and securing a paving contractor and late notice from the gas utility company. Back charges to the contractor were incurred as the trenching and installation of water and gas services were completed by Tan Enterprises. So, can we get a motion in a second?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez.
My second.
Trustee Derek with the second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next up is a return of a road maintenance bond for Sherwood Court. So in December of 2018, the village accepted dedication of Sherwood Court, and at that time, a one-year maintenance bond was posted as required pursuant to chapter 92B and 92-5B of the Village Code. The roadway has been inspected by the village engineer, by the highway department, and water and sewer department, with no deficiencies detected. They find the developer has fulfilled his obligation under the bond, and it's recommended that the bond be released subject to any administrative requirements of the building department and of the village clerk. So, with that said, I need a motion in a second to return the road maintenance bond that was posted in connection with the dedication of Sherwood Court, once all outstanding consultant fees are paid.
Make that motion.
Trustee Derek. Trustee Gomez, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Never aye. Moving on, new business, introductory local law number seven of 2020, entity disclosure. So I need a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law number seven of 2020, which would amend chapter 96 entitled Building Construction of the Village Code to implement an entity disclosure law. We need a motion in a second to preliminarily type this action as a type two under secret. I'm sorry. We need the motion in a second to introduce, I went too far.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, trustee Jacomaza with a second by trustee Derek, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? I vote aye.
Aye.
Now we need a motion in a second to type this as a type two under secret.
I'll make that motion.
My second.
Jesus with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Never aye. Lastly, on this issue, I need a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at 7:30 PM on July 9th at our next meeting to entertain public comments of introductory local law number seven of 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Andrew?
Okay.
Okay, Jesus with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Kelly, we miss anything? Okay, good, moving on. Introductory local law number eight of 2020, wireless telecommunications, this one's been a long time coming, what, about two and a half years, Kelly? Please, right?
About that, but you got it.
Okay, so we need a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law number eight of 2020, which would amend chapter 310 zoning of the Village Code, section 310-38, wireless telecommunications citing. So we first need a motion in a second to type this action as a type two? Type one? I had a good shot.
First, you gotta introduce it.
Yeah, introduce it first, and then I'll go through secret in a second.
You're right, I'm sorry, once again, I jumped ahead. We need a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law number eight of 2020. Wait, I just said that. So we need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Jesus with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Kelly, you want to talk about secret?
Yes, so this is a type one action under secret, so we would need a motion and a second to assume lead agency, and then a motion and a second to type it as a type one action. It affects more than 25 acres potentially in the village, so it becomes a type one.
Okay, so we'll do the lead agency first, so we need a motion in a second to do lead agency on this.
I'll make, I'll second it.
Trustee Derek, trustee Jacomaza with the second, any discussion? All in favor? I vote aye. So now we need to type it as a type one action under secret, so we need a motion in a second, please.
Make that motion.
Second it.
Trustee Jacomaza, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
I completed the full environmental assessment form, which my email said I was gonna send to you previously, but then I didn't wanna send it after the date that your meeting packet came out, so I have it, I'll give it to you, we can discuss it at the next meeting. But I didn't want you to think I forgot, but then I didn't wanna drop it on you right before the meeting, so, I have it, it's actually open in an email ready to be sent, so I'll send it after the meeting to you.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. All right, so next we need a motion in a second to refer introductory local law number eight of 2020 to the Village Planning Board. For comment. I saw trustee Gomez nod his head, I assume that was the motion, and trustee Jacomaza raised his hand for the second, any discussion? All in favor? And I vote aye. Okay. Need a motion in a second to refer introductory local law number eight of 2020 to the Orange County Planning Department under GM L 239.
Make that motion.
Trustee Derek and trustee Jacomaza with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lastly, with regard to this new local law, I need a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at 7:30 PM on July 23rd, 2020, to entertain public comments on introductory local law number eight, 2020.
Make that motion.
And trustee Jacomaza with the second, any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because we're scheduling this hearing and the hearing prior that you just did, attorney Norton's gonna be putting together the public notices, we do need to know whether these are gonna be Zoom meeting or in-person meetings, because if they're Zoom meetings, she needs to include the Zoom directions in the public notice.
Well, um, can we do them as Zoom meetings for now, and then change it after with regard to?
Yeah, I think every place is gonna be struggling with this unless we get some guidance from the governor. So for the most part, for the first one, we'll definitely, I'll be asking you to schedule that, so I can have the information to put in the public hearing notice, and then I'll follow up. The second public hearing requires more time for publication, which is why they're on two separate evenings. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit more guidance right before then, because right now, open meetings law is lifted till July 6th. So, by July 6th, I should have some information, and that would be making it timely for publication for the second one. But for the first one, we'll put that down as virtual, and we'll deal with it as it comes.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. So that's what we'll do. So we have the motion in a second, any further discussion on that? Then a vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay. Okay, next, authorize the attorney to draft a restraining order. Actually, we have a couple of these. So, correspondence has been received from the building inspector Thomas Berger regarding 32 Blueberry Lane being used as a place of worship. He has issued a violation order to the owner, and an appearance ticket was issued, but court has been adjourned to an unknown date due to the pandemic. Despite numerous warnings and discussions with the owner's attorney, the dwelling is still being used and occupied for worship services. He would like a restraining order drafted until such times as the use has been approved by the planning board. So with that said, can I please have a motion in a second to authorize the village attorney to draft the restraining order as requested?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza and trustee Gomez with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Never aye. Okay. Next, authorize attorney to draft a restraining order for 47 Hadley Farm Road. Again, correspondence has been received from the building inspector Thomas Berger regarding 47 Hadley Farm Road being used as a place of worship. He has issued a violation order to the owner, and an appearance ticket that was issued, but again, court's been adjourned to an unknown date due to the event, due to the pandemic. Despite numerous warnings and discussions with the owner's attorney, the dwelling is still being used and occupied for worship services. He would like a restraining order drafted until such times as the use has been approved by the planning board. So can I please have a motion in a second to authorize the village attorney to draft the restraining order as requested? Trustee Derek with the motion. Trustee Jacomaza with the second, any discussion? All in favor? Never aye. Okay. So, we have additional correspondence from the building inspector regarding the naming of a street in a subdivision known as Timber Trail. He recommends the board select the name, sorry, we changed this at the last minute. I wanna make sure I get this exactly right, the name Hallack Court, to be approved for this new road. So can I have a motion in a second for that, please?
Motion.
And it was trustee Gomez, trustee Derek with the second, any discussion?
Can you, can you just spell that, please, I wanna make sure I get it spelled right?
Yes, H. A L L O C K Court. H A L L O C K. Yeah? All in favor? I vote aye. Jesus, yes, okay. Thank you. All right, so, we went through that agenda pretty quickly, because we have a work session right after this, so we're gonna, that ends regular business, we're gonna move right into public comment. So anybody in the public? Do you have anything you'd like to say? Let's start with the, let's start with Sandy, you have anything, Sandy? Nope. Okay, Robin, you already unmuted yourself, or Neil, so I assume you have something?
I just wanted to thank you for the vote of confidence for the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and I look forward to working with the team.
Well deserved, thank you for that, Robin. You're gonna be a great committee member.
Hope so.
Okay.
Last meeting, last meeting, I think you mentioned something, there was something mentioned about a 400,000 square foot commercial and hotel space.
Yep.
And is, is that along Nenenger Road?
Yeah, it's a 406,000 square foot, five-story building. That's, that's applied to the town of Monroe. There's two application components there, one is to the town of Monroe Town Board for a zone change, as opposed to the ZVA for a variance for an extra 10 feet, because I believe they're only permitted 40 feet in that zone. And also to the town of Monroe Planning Board for this huge plan. So I had Dennis and Natalie prepare some documentation to prepare a response and written comment that we sent over to the town of Monroe, both the Town Board and the Planning Board, expressing some concern specifically with regard to secret, with regard to traffic, with regard to runoff, all of these different things, because they're adding, I think it's almost a 14-acre site, and this is from memory now, I think it's all like 13.6-acre site, 406,000 square feet, something like 8.6 acres of new impervious surface that they were adding, that directly aboves Village, the Village of Woodbury, at the top of WP3. And one of the things that really struck me as odd is that they were saying there'd be no adverse effects with runoff to neighboring properties, and I found that a little strange considering they're above WP3, and how could that not run off with all of that new impervious surface? But that was just one of many things that I had a personal concern with. So Dennis and Natalie prepared a pretty extensive document that we submitted, asking us to be an interested party, we're not a, uh, we are not a
Involved?
Involved agency, thank you. We are an interested party in this, and we will be informed, and we will be participating in that entire process. I didn't hear a question, but did I answer the question?
Yes, you did, thank you.
All right, great. Anything else from either you or your misses?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just making my way through.
Before you go on, I just wanna clarify, which attorney is gonna be doing the restraining orders, is that something?
Is, well, since these are new actions, it's gonna be the attorney for the village, as opposed to the village attorney, which would be Kelly and Rick.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify in case.
I had a feeling that question would come up from somebody, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so, Mr. Higgins, you have anything? I'm just gonna go from the bottom of the list up, that I see. Nope, okay, Maria, Mrs. Hunter?
I'm sorry, hello?
Oh, Mr. Higgins, please, go ahead.
Hello? I'm sorry, um, I appreciated your time tonight, Tim.
You're welcome.
About the access road and adding the 19.2 acres. I wrote to the, the Village Board regarding the space side in SEM 3, adding 19.2 acres to the life of mine, that included the access road via the railroad property. And I really appreciate you listening to me tonight, and, and listening to how many of the residents feel about this today. Adding 19.2 acres to a non-conforming use should be objected to today. And I realize that you've gone ahead and had Dennis Lindsay write a letter, but I really don't believe that anything is gonna make much difference unless the attorney is involved. What I'd like to say is, as you know, adding acreage to a non-conforming use, that's something we should be objecting to that today, and from the documents I've obtained, the applicant does not have an agreement to use the railroad property currently. That's another point, that's a legal matter. And I'm gonna ask the board to use the village attorney to object to adding 19.2 acres to a non-conforming use, and I'm calling for a vote tonight to object to that through the attorney. And I'm hoping that somebody will second that, and you can vote on it, and let the attorney write a letter.
Well, Matt, this is public comment, and you know, the, the public can't call for a vote of the board during public comment after we closed regular business, but, as I discussed with you earlier today, and I've already confirmed with our attorney, where I'm gonna have a conversation with her tomorrow, and that's exactly what the conversation is gonna be about, and we're gonna see what avenues we can take with regard to extending on the work that we've already done via our engineers. So, I, as I promised you earlier, and as I spoke to somebody else after I met with you, we are going to look into further actions that we can possibly take prior to the end of the commentary, and that's gonna be through our attorneys. So, that's what we're doing.
Okay, good, so, you're gonna object to this, then?
Not objecting to anything, what I'm stating is that a member of the public can't call for a motion in a second from the board during public comment, we just can't do that.
That's fine and dandy, but you're gonna object to this, then?
Object to what?
Are you gonna object to 19.2 acres?
Yeah, 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 of course, yeah, that's one of the things we discussed earlier, and that's what Kelly and I, and hopefully Natalie and our Dennis are gonna be speaking about tomorrow.
I'm just, I just wanna be clear that you're gonna object to this.
Yes, we are going to object to that, and I'm going to expand upon that based on all of the points that we discussed earlier.
I really appreciate that, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. Mrs. Hunter, you're up next.
Hi, I just wanna say thank you to all of you for looking into and sending letters to the town of Monroe Planning Board and the Town Board, because that's a very unique property with that 400,000 square foot building, being that it's, like you said, in the backyard is WP3, which is property that's owned by the town, and way back when, it was stated that people could come and shop from WP3 across through the parking lot. So I thank the board for being very proactive with that, because that is a serious issue to be looked at. And also into Mr. Higgins' comment about, he's talking about the Highland Sand and, former Highland Sand and gravel area?
That whole project back there, yeah.
Okay, good, because, and one other thing, if you do in your written response to the DEC on that, the drawdown of additional water, it'll impact several houses that live right alongside there, and down past Paleya where our, where our water tanks are, so, when they said that there was no adverse effects for, for this, you know, additional digging and everything, yes, there possibly could be, so I thank the board for being very proactive on that as well, so, that's my only two comments for tonight.
Thanks, Maria. Uh, Craig Brady? Oh, it's, yeah, Craig, anything? Okay, CG, I don't know who that is, but if you have anything? Mr. Zlata?
Yeah, thanks a lot, I wanna echo Robin's comments, thank the board for their vote of confidence, I'm looking forward to working with the rest of the team on the Comprehensive Planning Committee. And, you know, hope we all, we hope, hope we do justice to what you're looking for here. I did have, I did also wanna congratulate the town on introducing local law number seven, I think that's something that's far overdue in terms of knowing exactly who the town and the village is doing business with when it comes to development. I think far too many LLCs hide behind the LLC with very few members named. So I think this is something that will add to transparency of what goes on between developer and the village. I also, you know, just wanna echo, you know, regarding the proposed development on Nenenger Road, that does butt up against WP3. And there is a concern there in regards to the town-owned property. I think everyone is well aware that that town-owned property was dedicated by Cornell's to the town. Dedicated is to be preserved, there's open space, and there are state restrictions so indicating. So, you know, my concern is that the integrity of that be maintained, you know, throughout. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Joe. I think the rest of the people that are on this meeting are our consultants, so if there's anybody, any member of the public that wishes to be heard, please speak up now. Okay, so we'll move on to board member comment, I just wanna comment.
Tim?
Let's start, go.
I'm sorry, it's Neil. There, for the open space up at the junction?
Yep.
There should be a deed for that open space in the town records.
Yeah.
Because back in 2006, I worked with John Burke, and he assured me that he, that the, that the town did secure a deed on the, on that property. So there, there should be a deed on record.
I'm quite sure there is, I'm very well aware of that, yeah.
Yeah, it's Tim, it's Joe again, I have a copy of that deed, if you need, I can forward it to you.
I'm sure we have it, but I never mind an extra copy of anything.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a matter of public record, I was able to secure a copy, and the restrictions in that deed are very clearly stated.
All right, thank you, Neil and Joe on that, anybody else? Okay, so, as was brought up by a couple of people on the meeting tonight, I wanna make you aware of efforts that we're taking on your behalf to protect the interests of the village regarding the DEC application of Space Side Quarry. So this application seeks to expand the quarry operation in the north end of the village, without getting into too much detail. But before getting into specifics, I just wanna thank the residents that have come forward, and I wasn't gonna name anybody in particular, but Matt identified himself as one of those people, so Matt Higgins, I wanna thank you. And I spoke to another resident in your area, specifically about rattlesnakes and about water with regard to this application expansion as well. Right after I met with you here at Village Hall, I spoke to her on the phone. Um, so, these concerns echo mine, and have been many of the same problems that I've been speaking about publicly since 2014. Water is our most precious resource, and without water, we simply can't survive as a community. So the areas that we have concern are over are buried. To start with, we're concerned about the impact on our aquifer, specifically the effects on the quantity and quality of water. You know, and I've said this many times in the, in the past, both recent and distant past, that the aquifer doesn't follow municipal boundaries, the aquifer just crosses all of these boundaries, and, and it affects everybody. Any, any action that one municipality or one applicant or one business takes in the aquifer in one area affects people right across the border, so that's very, very important to understand. So we're also concerned about the drawdown on neighboring wells, and of course, the effect on our municipal wells, which are side by side in those areas. Erosion, sediment control, and dust have been frequent problems in the past, and with the increased activity, this can only get worse. Noise, traffic impacts, exceeding operating hours, and enforcement of complaints round out the major concerns, there are others, and we could talk about this for hours, but we're not going to. Our engineers, and again, I wanna thank Dennis and Natalie for putting together a great comprehensive document that we were able to use to respond to the DEC with, with regard to this application. They've evaluated Space Side's application and provided written comment on our behalf that I submitted very early last week. Their analysis was detailed and on point regarding our concerns. And again, I have spoken and met with a couple of people since then. So we're gonna continue to monitor the situation and do whatever it is that we can to protect our resources, especially water, and if anybody has any further information that they wanna impart to us, feel free to reach out, and we'll be happy to use that either before or after the commentary. So that's all I had tonight, thank you. Um, Chris isn't here this evening, why don't we go to Jesus? You're muted, bud. Jesus, you there? You're muted.
Respect to go so quickly.
You're good, sorry.
Um, I just have, I just wanna say that we're approaching the Thursday, our third phase, an opening, so please take it slow, let's be kind to others. We can continue, respect everyone's wishes, if person wants the mask on. She's worried, it can only help. It's not harming you, well, let's do it, or, so that way we can start moving and finally open this all up, so I need to get to the gym, I'm getting way too fat. Let's be kind to others, respectful, and hopefully.
Getting?
Getting, haha.
Wow.
I'm not as big as you, so, so work together as a as a community, and be mindful of others' behaviors and respect them for it, and we should get through this. Then we should get through this fairly quickly, hopefully, and get back to the real normal, not this new normal that everyone's talking about. And, uh, thank you all who came out and those that voiced their opinions on all these issues, and stay safe.
Thank you, Jesus. Tara?
Hi, thank you, everyone, for joining or watching. I'll be short. With the Fourth of July holiday approaching next week, I want to take a minute to acknowledge this great country, uh, which we have the privilege of calling home. Let the freedom fought for us by the heroes of this country never be in vain. Let us work together, hands in hand, to protect it. July fourth is a day of sacrifice and of pride, and I hope many will stand together with their neighbors to celebrate this great nation. God bless America and a happy and safe Fourth of July to all the beautiful people of our village and our country. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tara. Andrew?
Let me start by passing on my thoughts and prayers to former town councilman, Mike Essick, on the death of his, the passing of his mother. So, um, it just, I extend my condolences to Mike and Victoria and the entire Essex family. Um, this is a big week this week for Monroe Woodbury. Uh, as we saw the new normal with Monroe Woodbury students and graduation ceremonies. I'm sure when the, um, the school year began, our students and parents alike did not see the senior year going, going this direction. Senior year is usually end of one chapter and the anticipation for the next one to begin. Saying goodbye to old friends and knowing new friends are waiting right around the corner. COVID nineteen robbed our seniors of many of the things that make the final year of high school so special. Whether that's senior prom or the graduation ceremony or just hanging with friends. Uh, your village board applauds our seniors, the way they have handled these setbacks. We also applaud those parents who have worked tirelessly, tirelessly to create memories for our seniors. And there are so many people to thank on that front. And hopefully, when we get out of this whole quarantine stage and we're able to do meetings again, we can thank some of those people who have done that. Uh, with the hurdles our graduates and their parents have overcome, we are certainly expecting great things from our seniors, because if they can get through all this, they can basically get through anything. So, uh, I would like to say, and I'll say it on behalf of the board, we congratulate, congratulate all our twenty twenty graduates from Monroe Woodbury. That's it, folks. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Desiree?
Say, um, last meeting, Jesus, uh, made some comments that you may not have been able to understand because of the recording with the, with the meeting, but he sent them to me in writing, and they made me cry. And he's, he, the comments he made, being a police officer and also a, a gentleman who has been to experienced discrimination in the past, I'm getting chills just now. I want you to know that what he said was truly inspirational and, and both sides, and Jesus, if there's a way for you to post that on your G and G page or whatever, I think it's very important for you to do so because I tried to capture as much as I could of it in the minutes, but I don't think I did it justice. And it was, I didn't realize when I was listening to you exactly what you were saying until I read what you sent, and it was truly inspiring and amazing and, and fair on all sides of the issue, and I think you need to share that, and I wanted to say that.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
And it does. She muted herself. You're very dark there, but I saw a thumbs up. All right, so I don't see any department heads on. Do any of our consultants have anything they'd like to say during the regular meeting? Before we move on to the work session?
Tim, can I just add, you know, you sometimes, we sometimes forget that the Cornwall seniors are also part, we have a whole section of Woodbury that where the kids go to the Cornwall School Districts. So bravo to them and congratulations, and get ready for the next chapter of your lives as well. So.
Very good. Okay, terrific. So, uh, we're gonna go right into a work session with our consultants on the Water Quality Protection Overlay District as soon as we adjourn. Uh, so it'll be on the same meeting. We're just gonna continue right into that. Uh, so with no further comments, uh, can I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion. Tara did.
Yep, I think Tara did first. We'll take the second from Andrew. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, meeting adjourned. Okay, so we'll just continue the recording and move right into the, uh, work session.
Everybody's willing to.
Hang on, somebody was just waving at me.
That's Desiree. She was saying goodbye.
Oh, you're leaving? Okay, got it. Okay.
I'm taking minutes for like our usual work sessions.
Ah, there's Valerie. I saw your name before, but I didn't see video yet.
Yeah, well, I figured I'd just.
Oh, that's fine.
Stay hidden until.
You're one of our officials.
Ready for me.
All right, so a few people dropped off, but we still have a few members of the public, and we have four out of the five board members and our consultants. So who wants to lead off? Would it be Dennis or Kelly?
Um, well, I guess I'll give a brief just introduction. As everybody knows, this is about the Water Quality Protection Overlay. We have talked about this. The boards talked about it. The prior boards have talked about it, um, but it really came back up when uh, the board wanted to address it and move it forward, finding it very important to protect the water sources in the village. So we had prepared, um, updated documents, updated environmental assessment forms and part one and part two. We spoke with Valerie, we spoke with Dennis and Natalie about what we thought additional, what additional information we thought was necessary for the board to consider as far as taking a hard look under SECR. And they've provided you with reports. We also, um, had the public hearing on this, the second public hearing on this at your last meeting. Didn't receive, um, many comments from the public. I spoke with Desiree before this. You had extended the written comment period. You received no new written comments. And it was referred to the planning board, and Dennis and Natalie provided you a report from the planning board, which I know that they'll go over. So based on what we have so far, I do know that there are some modifications that need to be made to the text of the law based on this, you know, some minor changes here, some minor changes there. Um, and updates to the map that I was talking with Dennis about earlier. So we have to get that to you. Next week, I'm going to get that to you so you have it in time for your following meeting on the ninth. But if Valerie and Dennis wanted, and Natalie want to take over, that's my summary. If anybody has anything additional or has, you know, any thoughts after the work session, please feel free to shoot me an email, or if you're reading it and, you know, one part doesn't make sense to you and you want to clarify, shoot me an email and we can address it.
Thanks, Kelly. Dennis?
Yes, um, we wrote, um, a memo to the board back on June fifth, and I'm just gonna go over that briefly. That was really in two parts. The first part was laying a foundation for the overlay and providing some background technical information on studies that have been done in the aquifer by United States Geological Service, by other hydrogeologic engineers, work that we participated in, um, and studies that have done by EPA and, uh, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, providing a foundation for a technical foundation, scientific foundation that is for an overlay zone. I'm not going to go over that in any further detail than to say that unless there's any questions on that. Also, in that memo, we talked about the local law and comments that you received when you had a public hearing back in two thousand and eighteen, I think. And, uh, there were some comments that were posed by the public. And we went through your law, we went through the comments from the public, and then we went through whether we thought that the law was consistent with what you wanted to achieve, or whether in fact the public had raised a question or a comment that we thought perhaps you'd want to make an adjustment in the law, consider some adjustment in the local law to comply with that, uh, request, um, uh, or that comment of the public. Would you like me to drill down? Should I go through those items, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I thought, I thought the board members would appreciate you doing that. So yeah, if you could, please.
Okay, well, in the local law, there were some questions on definitions. Uh, one was about impervious cover. We took a look at that, and we looked at the questions and the conflicts that the, uh, person thought were there. We find no conflict. The only difference was, uh, the local law simply specifies that, that the runoff is quote, a runoff into the ground, which was different than the other one, simply says runoff. We don't really believe that's a conflict there. We don't think you need to change anything. Uh, for recharge, there was a question regarding, um, there are means of, many means of recharge related to aquifers, and the definition, the code is general in its mechanism. And we believe it's appropriate. We don't think you need to make any change there either. As far as public water, which was defined, the only difference that we find from your law, your law is that this one talks more about public water supply source, and we think that the definition, you should really be defining public water supply source in this, because that's what you're referring to, because public water supply can be distribution mains, it can be water tanks, it can be pumps. That's not what you're referring to. You're referring to the source water. Uh, that's the only minus, minor modification under the definitions. As far as exemptions, um, from the law, there were some questions that were raised. In, in connection with the water pollution control plans, uh, they're, they're required to be filed for certain specific facilities, mining, junkyards, and refuse stumps, gasoline stations and the like, automobile service stations and dry cleaning facilities. And what this is, is that the code anticipates that there are some uses out there that are existing uses. Um, and they're going to be prohibited in the future, but for the existing uses, uh, they're allowed to stay, but they have to file a water pollution control plan within a year of adoption of the law. Uh, the recommendation that we had here is that you might want to expand that to other uses that you may not have defined here, which could be detrimental, and we may not have listed them because we don't have all of the uses. Uh, electroplating, car washes, a manufacturing plant, or something along those lines that is not in this list, you may want to have a water, uh, pollution control plan, uh, submitted within one year. And so we, we made a recommendation that you make it a little more general for, uh, deleterious uses, potentially deleterious uses, that have chemicals or that sort of thing. As far as, um, the Department of Health has requirements for public water supply wells. They require a certain spatial separation between wells, uh, to potential sources of pollution. Um, and you must, and one of them is a separation from, um, from, uh, streams that are flowing and that sort of thing. You have a requirement that nothing be installed within the, in the buffer areas and the riparian zones. We recommend that the local law that you have permit water supply wells in the buffer or riparian zone if the Department of Health grants an exemption and grants approval for that. There are, we have applications, and you in fact have some wells that are in areas that would be considered in the buffer zones. And, uh, you might propose some further, uh, up in the Troutbrook area. So we think that you can expand that if the Department of Health approves it. You received, uh, comments from the public that you should consider the impact of the buffer area on access to roads and highways. Uh, there might be occasions when an access road for a development needs to penetrate a buffer zone. Uh, that's the only opportunity it has for, um, uh, access to the property. And, uh, we believe that you might want to change the law to make it clear that an exception for access roads, utilities, and stormwater facilities could be considered by the planning board in conjunction with a full environmental review of the property and a site plan review. And if the planning board deemed that that was the most appropriate access point or the most appropriate location environmentally for a stormwater facility, that it could be placed in those through the discretion of the planning board in its full environmental review. And you can stop me at any time. Okay, I'm sorry if I'm keep, I'm just trying to run through these. The public questioned whether there was a conflict between, between requiring additional plantings in a riparian zone and the riparian zone remaining undisturbed. Again, you might want to consider revising the law to permit disturbances for the purpose of planting supplemental vegetation when the planning board deems it appropriate. Also, that this only be done by handwork, no machines in that area, and it can be re, you know, revegetated, but by handwork. There, the, um, one section of the law under regulated activities says the disposal, deposit, or discharge of solid or liquid waste onto any land or waters in the overlay district is prohibited. We recommend that you consider clarifying that to exempt the washing of cars, the washing of driveways, the washing of patios, and other residentially related incidental cleaning operations. You can limit it however you wish in terms of a fire, you know, not a fire hose, but a, a simple garden hose or that kind of a thing. We also recommend, and this was part of what the planning board had said as well, that you consider the operations of the village highway department. The local law now says that, um, no, no collected snow that has been contaminated with salt or de-icing chemicals may be transported into and deposited with the overlay district. Well, the practices of your highway department are such that, uh, when snow accumulates on thirty-two or other areas of high use, to the point where it could impede safety or the, the movement of the public, the highway department picks up that snow material, puts it in their trucks, brings it over to the yard and dumps it there for melting. That's not taking material into, but it is moving it around within the overlay district. Um, I don't think it's at odds with what your intent was, but, uh, I think it should reflect that. Also, um, the planning board typically puts a requirement for site plans that come before it, that have parking lots, that the parking lot manager or the property manager, uh, must maintain that parking lot in a usable condition. And if snow accumulates to the extent that they either lose the parking or it, it affects public safety, that sort of thing, they too are required to, uh, move that, that snow and remove that snow. They may move it within their parking lot, or they may move it someplace else within, within the, uh, village. I don't really have, we don't ask for details on that. We simply asked them to remove it. However you see fit, I think you might want to have something in there so it wouldn't be in conflict with the special permit condition of planning board resolution.
So are you suggesting that we add an exclusion in for either the highway department or snow that needs to be removed to be relocated? That it would be able to be relocated within a certain area of the village? Like, for example, the last thing you just talked about, the property next to the old bank. I remember that clearly in that resolution and the planning board resolution. Because that's such a tight parking lot that they have to remove that snow. Uh, but that would really be up to the contractor that the property owner contracts with as to where they're going to take that snow. So how would you suggest we add that in?
Well, for the highway department, I think it's fairly simple because we kind of know what they do with it and we can do that. For others that have a requirement of a special permit, what you might want to do is require that at the time that's, they, they provide you with a disposition plan for the snow. Uh, and if they want to modify it in the future, they can modify. We do that in terms of soil removal. When we have soil removal from a site, uh, sometimes because of concerns about trucking, uh, concerns about where it's going to go, we ask for a soils disposition plan. I think you might want to have that coupled with any planning board action in the future. Uh, if it's in the, uh, if it's in your code, in your law, then we'll make sure that it's done at the time of planning board approval. For those special permits that are out there now, you might want to do this in terms of the water pollution control plan that we talked about before for certain chemical uses. You could do that here in a simpler fashion for, uh, providing a disposition plan within a year of adoption of the law as to how they handle their snow. Quite frankly, it doesn't happen lately. It hasn't happened that often, but I do remember some winters around here that, uh, you know, ninety-seven, I remember was, we didn't see the ground for, uh, for six or seven months, and we had piles of snow very high in, uh, in Woodbury Common. So, um, it, it could come, could happen again. So I think we can fashion something in there if that's to your liking that would require that they come back in, uh, within a certain period after the adoption of the law, to provide, uh, information on what they're going to do with it.
That sounds reasonable, and I do like the idea of the planning board dealing with that with resolutions, the same with they do with, uh, you know, dirt removal, that kind of thing. I think that's reasonable and consistent.
Okay, uh, moving on, uh, you might want to consider exemptions to the local law for the following practice. Moving on, you might want to consider exemptions to the local law for the following practices. Residential lawn maintenance for mowing and application of approved fertilizer and existing underground petroleum storage tanks and highway department operations. We wrote this before we went to the planning board, but in the planning board comments, you'll see some of the same thing. For example, you're not supposed to cut any vegetation in the, in the riparian zone. Well, certain properties wouldn't have any property if it wasn't for the riparian zone. Some, along 105 there, there are properties up in the corner of Ridge Road and 105 where almost the entire property is within the riparian zone and it's a lawn. I think you'd want them to cut their lawn. You could also have them apply fertilizers as long as they're environmentally friendly. There are different types of fertilizers and their, their high nitrogen contents and high phosphate, you know, phosphate contents, you can, you can avoid. So I think you might be able to do something along those lines where these people can still maintain a lawn in that area if it's, if it's existing. There's a difference between the existing and the proposed. So we're just trying to address the, the existing there. And same thing for the petroleum storage tanks. You'll see that when we talk about what the planning board recommended. You prohibit tanks without a DEC approval in the future. Okay? Which is fine because that's what has to be done. But there are a number of buried fuel tanks out there associated with homes that came in before the DEC approved them, and I'm sure they're there. Homeowners may or may not even know. So you may want to have something there on ground, on grandfathering, but you might want to couple it with testing to make sure the tank's not leaking. Now, within a certain period after the approval of the, the overlay zone, and then thereafter in a certain recurrence interval, having it tested to make sure that we don't end up with leaking tanks within, within the zone.
Dennis, can we push that issue with regard to testing? Because that's a DEC function.
Well.
There'd be, there'd be a spill number generated, for example, if they detected gasoline in the soil, for example.
Right. I don't think these would be gasoline tanks. I think these would be fuel oil tanks. Okay, but still, you're, you're correct. But I mean, if they're not permitted now and they're existing, I, I don't know if everything is permitted right now. I mean, they catch up with you eventually.
Well, they changed over from county health departments to the DEC and so on. Yeah, okay, fair enough.
So anyway, it's something to think about, and I already talked about the highway department operations. Again, there were some technical questions besides those things that you might want to consider exemptions in the codes that were raised by different, different presenters at the, at the public hearing. One comment was the village should have documentation in its files and before the Board of Trustees to support certain statements in the, in the law, the draft law. And those statements referred to streams and aquifers facing challenges of contaminants. And then the, it talks about elevated chlorides and nutrient enrichment and siltation. We believe that the DEC made some determinations, and they were adapted from findings in the Woodbury Creek Biological Assessment Report of June 8th, 2007. Also DOH had some comments, and they were based on the May 8th, 2003 Source Water Assessment Report. So to comply with that, we will provide copies of, we actually did provide copies of the excerpts of that so that the challenge to where those comments came from will be in the village's files so that they can be reduced if that, if those, that person who commented on there requests that information. There was a statement in the law that existing state and federal regulations are not adequate to prevent degradation of streams and aquifers. And then the comment was there needs to be documentation in the record before you can make that statement. We suggest that statement be removed or replaced with a statement that the regulations proposed will supplement and enhance regulatory controls protecting source water quality by mechanisms and techniques suggested under the county's wellhead protection study and recommendations of the EPA for water source protection. Those two items that we quoted there are some of the items that in our technical report to you are detailed. So you have a foundation for it, and then you can put the language in, if you wish, that we suggested. Just let me take a second. I think we went over this one. Well, the draft law says that, about impervious surfaces, that surface, surfaces, improvements in structures that cannot effectively infiltrate rainfall, snowmelt, and water runoff into the ground, including but not limited to building rooftops, pavement sidewalks, and driveways. And the comment was that we should be asked to weigh in on providing meaning to the term effectively. What we suggested is that the DEC Stormwater Design Manual uses the threshold for infiltration of 0.5 inches per hour to determine infiltration feasibility and site limitations. Anything less than that rate of infiltration should be considered ineffective, and that's, that's what we would recommend there. And if, if you want to include that, then there's a criteria there. The draft law says that facilities must be connected to a municipal storm sewer system except for linear petroleum transport facilities. And under paragraph, and there's a certain section of the code cited there. And the comment was, what is this? Is this defined anywhere? Well, I believe that the interpretation was a linear petroleum transport facility was intended to define a fuel pipeline. All right? But if it's, if it's not going to be defined as such in there, you can change, you can add the definition and define it, or you can simply change the words linear petroleum transit, transport facility to a fuel pipeline if that was your intent in that.
I just want to interrupt so the board knows that that comment came from me. I did not know what was meant by that. So if you want it to be changed to a fuel pipeline so it's clear, I think that would probably be better than just putting in a definition. Everybody really knows what a fuel pipeline is, but a linear, whatever.
Whatever, yeah.
Petroleum transport facility?
Yeah. I would go along with that. Jesus is nodding his head too.
I was confused clearly, so I just wanted the board to know when he said, there was a comment about, I thought that if I didn't understand it, some member of the public that's coming in to develop may not understand it either. And clarity, if you can provide it in advance is always helpful.
Agreed.
Okay, so there's only a few more. The method of measuring the buffer width is important, and it may not be clear. Okay, I don't know if it was challenged, but I.
It wasn't the last time, so I'm glad you're bringing this up.
But the planning board talked about it too, and we looked at that. And we recommend you consider using the top of the stream bank. And we believe it can be defined as the primary edge of the ordinary high watermark or break-in slope for water course, which maintains the integrity of the water course. We took that from a sample stream buffer ordinance that's provided by Tompkins County, New York. It's not something that we invented. And we talked about different ways. Sometimes the banks aren't really clear, but we think that that's the, that's a good one to define. The problem with using the center of the stream is sometimes the streams get very broad.
Yeah. And the center of the stream is measured at what section of the stream? Because, you know, they're like this, they're like this, it changes, it changes with floods. Who knows? I like that one better.
Okay. A next one is that you might want to consider if it would be appropriate to grant greater discretion to the planning board and the building inspector to evaluate the nature, that is, the existing condition of the buffer area in consideration of proposed activities and land use. For example, for instance, the buffer area may have been previously disturbed or it's existing impervious material already, or certain, so certain requirements of the law may not be applicable in that case. And if you agree, I recommend that the law cite the general conditions when this would be applicable and the level of discretion permitted. You'll also find this in the comments from the planning board. And they just, you're not supposed to disturb something if it's already paved. You might want to use that area instead of paving some other area to provide the use that they can, they can provide in that area. So that's something to consider about the discretion the planning board might have there.
Well, I'm sorry, you said the planning board or the building inspector? Was it either or, or?
Well, there are some things that don't, there are some things that would not go before the planning board for site plan application. They just come to the building inspector, he can grant approvals or not. And he might want to have that same discretion for not telling an applicant, you need to pave over here because you're not allowed to be in the riparian zone. However, they already have an area that's paved in the riparian zone. They may not have to pave something elsewhere and they could, you know, put something here in the, in a place that's already disturbed.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't the burden be better placed on the building inspector for something like that?
Well, sometimes there's an application, if it's an application before the planning board. So that's why it's both, I think.
Okay, all right.
A public comment was received requesting clarification regarding exclusion of the riparian and buffer zones around reservoirs. It's something in the language that you had here in section F2BIIII, all right? Where there appears to be a, an exclusion for the planning board's discretion when it's reviewing applications with disturbance of riparian zones around reservoirs. I don't know if that was your intent or not. Riparian zones, in our opinion, are important everywhere around water bodies, around reservoirs, around streams. So I don't know why you would exempt that other than obviously there are certain areas that are non-compliant. Bioral reservoir, you have activities right up to the shorebank for probably one quarter to maybe, you know, one quarter to one third of reservoir, but that's an existing condition.
That's the example that came up in the last discussion a couple of years ago.
Okay, so I don't know if you want to exempt that wholly because there is certainly another portion of the reservoir that isn't, isn't cleared. And over at Cromwell, which is your other reservoir, there are, there are properties that go up to Cromwell, but there's large extents of areas of that which are not disturbed as well, and you might want to protect that, at least have the protections in place that the overlay law provides. The last thing that I had in the report to you is on mapping. There were a number of maps prepared. There was the original map prepared, and this was done by NPV working with Orange County. And they produced a good quality map that showed what are, the water areas to be protected, but it was using the GIS database. Natalie, you'll correct me if I'm wrong on this. The GIS database that Orange County had, which pretty much married up with the DEC, but there were a few different things. And we noted that, and then the map was changed. And that map that I just referred to now is the one that you got with the package, I believe, the board. There was a revision to that shortly thereafter where we talked about using the DEC data set and incorporating that. One of the particular changes was down in the Ramapo River watershed. The data set that we got originally from the county had a whole series of waterways down in the ICC property and down in there, which really are not waterways. They're, they're dry ditches, and I don't know how they got into that, but they, they show as blue lines and they would all be protected, and it would be a tremendous amount of riparian and buffer zone areas down there that wouldn't be appropriate. So when they changed the DEC data set, they corrected that. The Ramapo River is shown down there as well as one or two tributaries in that area that feed it. But when they did that, it started, they missed some other water bodies. There are a number of water bodies that didn't show up. We drafted, based upon what we received, another map using the second map we received and showing the additional water bodies and some tributaries or, or discharges from Shadow Lake and from Saltsman's Lake that the board asked us to include. We included that in, but it was just markings on a plan that we made, and it really doesn't follow, it doesn't use the DEC data set or the, or the county data set. This is a long way of saying that you have the very strong bones of a good map, but you don't quite have it yet, in my opinion. And so I think, now, I don't know if NPV followed up on this. They may have, although things kind of stopped after we produced this map, and I'm not sure if anything happened. But we can provide it to them because they were working with Orange County to produce the map. And we're doing a fine job. And I don't know if they, they had our last comments on that mapping, or at least were able to take it up with the county. Maybe there's a fourth map out there that has everything, but that's what we really need.
So two questions then. First one for Kelly. We would need to rectify this before we move forward on this, right?
Yes. So I was actually gonna.
This is one of my concerns from the very beginning.
Yeah, but I know I had spoken with Dennis earlier, and I had a couple of changes to, to the map that he said he could work with us on, really because the map identifies the aquifers. It doesn't identify the overlay, which is what for zoning purposes it needs to identify. So, but we, I would need the maps no later than July 1st. So who's ever making those corrections?
That goes to Valerie then. Valerie, what can we do with that? Can we get this done?
Actually, this is the first time that we're getting involved, being discussed with this map. I know we had a prior map, you know, from a number of months ago, maybe even like a year or two ago, but we haven't even looked into it at this point. So we would have to take a look to see what is needed, what updates need to be done.
All right, so with what's being discussed, any idea on a time estimate how long it will take to get that done?
The last time we had any sort of conversations with the county was a number, you know, was a number of months or actually years ago. So we would have to follow up with them at this point to see where things are.
Okay, so you don't know? All right.
No, I don't at this point.
Okay, well, we'll work with Valerie's office and coordinate and see how we can handle this thing. If we cannot get it done through the county because we're all relying on a third party here and get them to move by July 1st. Natalie, you think we can produce something that would be representative? I mean, we can always adjust the map, I think, as long as it's representative of what is being proposed.
I think we could do something like that. Again, we discussed this earlier. It would be a general, and I think it should be further refined, you know, to show like the exact limits and, and bends and whatnot of those water bodies. But I think, you know, we can refine what we already submitted with those markups.
The, the, DE, not the DEC, but the county should have it because the earlier maps did have that, those lines on it in their data set. So hopefully it's as simple enough as turning it on and turning it off, and they simply turned it off and they could turn that layer back on. And, and they don't really have to generate anything other than a, a map that has the correct buttons turned on for the layers.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Am I saying that right?
Yeah. I don't know how complicated it is, to be honest with you. Data sets themselves would have to be parsed, I think, and then, you know, take pieces of each to make that full map, but.
All right, well, you know, the whole team knows what it is we're trying to accomplish, so.
We'll get it done.
Get that done, but yeah, I know. Complete faith.
I'm gonna jump in with one more thing if I could. The board heard from Dennis and Natalie, and you're still going to hear from Valerie. But in, Dennis covered what he'd done from an environmental standpoint, as well as addressed some of the comments and things like that. I just want to make sure, I'm going to be making revisions to the law that the board is on board with Dennis's recommendations and therefore with your on-boardness, I have the authority to go forward and make those changes. Yeah, I just don't want to make something where the board said, oh, you know, I, I really didn't agree with that comment on snow plowing.
That's what this workshop is for, so everybody should be chiming in with whatever thoughts they have on any of these points. That's.
Yeah, I think if somebody was really against it, other than that, maybe we'll get that much snow again, Dennis. You saw me go like.
I'm definitely against that. Getting that much snow, that is.
Well, you can put that in the law, but I don't know if it's going to help you.
How forceful that is, yeah, okay.
Okay, then, then I'll continue with those changes. And again, if anybody objects, just shout it out when you think of it.
Now, I know I've taken a lot of time, but that, that was, you know, a lot that we had in there. There's also a letter that we wrote on June 19th, and that is based upon the comments to the planning board. And in this particular case, we're basically providing to you the comments of the planning board and what they thought about the law in terms of specific sections. This one, in this, we gave the section and we gave the comment of the planning board. Now, quite frankly, we advise the planning board. So a number of these items, the items we went over, that they, reiterates the issue about marrying up with the practices of the highway department, salt storage, and that sort of thing. So I don't know if you want me to go through this letter, or how you want me to handle this, Mara.
A pleasure to the board.
Why don't you just talk about the differences between whatever you mentioned?
I will try to zero in on those as much as I can, okay?
A lot of detail, I know.
All right. In section 8.2 of the local law, it grants the planning board authority to reconcile disparities in the code. to reconcile disparities in the code for the overlay and the underlying zones. And that's because you can't think of everything and you may have a conflict between the overlay and the underlying zone. The planning board agrees, but recommends the appeal process be clarified. They want the appeal being filed, if there is an appeal, being filed with the building inspector, and any further appeals would go to the ZBA. I think Kelly weighed in, that's the, would be the normal process, and so that was a recommendation from them. The outdoor store, the code, I'm sorry, the overlay zone prohibits outdoor storage of certain chemicals, hazardous materials, petroleum products, fertilizers, I mean, very good list of things that you want to prohibit. Except, they're allowed to be in protective structures approved by the building inspector, and that's when they're allowed to be in. It was raised by the board that we recommend that you consider changing that to storage in approved vessels. And that's because if you have a fuel company that has a truck that's allowed to run over the highways and it's certified by the DOT and all that, and they drive back into the yard, they don't want to be in violation, simply because it's in a storage vessel, or if there's a ground level tank and it's approved, it's not a structure, or not a building. So they recommended that you make it a, just simply, storage in approved vessels. I already talked about this, but for existing residential heating oil tanks, again, they want, they suggest you have some sort of grandfathering in here for existing tanks, albeit perhaps with a testing requirement. Actually, that wasn't the board's thing, that was me trying to figure out how you might be able to do this for grandfathering and suggesting that perhaps you have a leakage test at some period and just make sure it's not leaking. There's a prohibition against the burial of human remains within 100 feet of a stream or water body in the proposed overlay zone. It was suggested by the board that you expand that to say, also, it's prohibited for a burial of animal remains. So, any kind of remains of a biological creature are not allowed to be in that zone. The local law prohibits the application of fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, or manure in the repairian zone. The planning board suggests you consider allowing anti-mosquito and tick spraying by licensed applicators or homeowners using currently approved products. And if you do grant that exemption, which they recommend you do, you should consider what approved products might be and who makes that determination. That could be the building inspector, could be however you want to do it, but if someone has a whole couple of 50 gallons of Roundup, I don't think you want them using it now under current conditions, but if it's something environmentally friendly and they can show that, obviously it's a pesticide, it's not friendly, there's some bugs, but to water supply, that that would be okay. Okay, the law prohibits chemical storage in the buffer zone, the planning board recommends that any existing chemical storage facility has to file a water pollution control plan within one year, just like you do for some of the other things. There is one section, that's the snow storage, again, I'm not gonna repeat that. There is a restriction to clearing of vegetation and application of fertilizers, pesticides within the repairian zone. Again, the planning board recommends consideration of a resident's ability to maintain, that is, to mow and fertilize existing lawns within the repairian zones. And the planning board went further to say that exemption should be for single-family residential areas and not commercial, and I have commercial residential, I don't know if I said that correct, Kelly. Do you know if it was commercial or commercial residential, was that like townhouses?
Whoops, I'm on mute, sorry. I'm gonna have to look.
Okay, anyway, they're recommending that it be applicable for single-family houses, alright? I don't know if they were just objection to commercial, or if they were objecting to, say, townhouse development, or something you might kind of call commercial residential.
Yeah, I think, I think, because there was a specific discussion about the townhouses and-
Falkirk? Jenko?
Jenko, Jenko is the one they specifically brought up.
And that one, there is a special reason there, because that goes up to the river's bank, they're staying away from that, they have a little wall, if you will, to try, because that area could potentially flood from that stream, Woodbury Creek, and I think there's an area along the stream bank there you may want to just leave in it, whatever natural state there is now, that's an area that's somewhat cleared, but you might not want to do any more work over there, let it grow and filter water that gets to the stream. There is a provision in the overlay zone that authorizes the planning board to decide if proposed development within a repairian zone is necessary, because the needs of the community outweigh the need for protection of the water body, or if the restrictions in the overlay district render a property unusable by a property owner by virtue of the regulations. The planning board agreed with that, but it requested some guidance or criteria for granting exemptions. What they're afraid of is that that may become a catch-all for anyone who comes in and they just simply say, well, this outweighs the, outweighs the need for protection of the water area. So, is it based upon best value of the property? Because, you know, that would be a build-out in accordance with just your zoning criteria. Is there some other way to measure that? How would it be, how would it be interpreted?
What about, maybe, I don't think this thought is fully formulated, but what about the questions used to determine whether or not a variance could be granted with the ZBA? Something along those lines. In other words, have you proven that you can't come up with any other use, or can't do it any other way, things like that?
That's, that's a, that's a good thought, to kind of put in some factors for, to be balanced.
Right, make them as objective as possible.
Yeah.
Well, you can also work a waiver process, waiver process into that local law, so that it goes to the zoning board for a waiver.
But then, when it gets, if it's a waiver for the zoning board, they don't have any tests to follow, they don't have any guidelines to follow for a waiver.
Well, but if it's the same, if it's the same arguments that they would typically use for like a use variance or something like that, they're used to dealing with those types of arguments more than the planning board. So that's just something to consider.
So in other words, an automatic trigger, an automatic referral, just like some things do from the planning board.
Right, if for some reason somebody wants an exemption, right, a waiver from that local law.
Right, that would be an automatic referral for the ZBA. That's actually a good point, in that the planning board might not necessarily have the experience with which to make that decision, but the ZBA would. What do you think, Dennis?
Well, I think that the planning board punted a little bit on this one to you, because it is a difficult one, and because it's real that if someone comes in, they can always make an argument that the best value of the property is building under the zone plan. Sorry that we have to go into the buffer area, I'm sorry we have to go into the repairian zone, but that's the only way you get full value on taxes and everything else out of the property. That's the argument. So, what do you use as a criteria to evaluate that? I don't know if it's dollar value out of the property, I don't think it's that, and there's a balance, if there's a balance between the environment and development, you're gonna have some people that want the development, and some people that want pure environment. So I think that, like I said, it's not an easy one to do, and if we send it to the ZBA, I'm not sure that it falls exactly within what they normally review in their criteria too. So I don't know what their guidance would be. I haven't really tried to come up with a solution for this, but I mean, we can try to do something. Happy to hear anybody's thoughts, but-
Yeah, I agree with you in that it wouldn't necessarily fit within the criteria for a normal ZBA referral. I was just thinking along the lines of using a similar structure for the questions to determine whether or not, I don't know, like I said-
Well, you're right, but even those structures, even those questions, I mean, can it be done anyplace else? There are certain questions that, well, Kelly knows it much better than I do, five-part test or something like that, there's certain questions that you ask, and I don't know if this falls in there, but having some questions to answer, be they other questions or not, have you, one, have you maximized the, or minimized the encroachment into the buffer and the repairian zone? I mean, that'd be one question, okay? Can the development be placed anyplace else on the site, you know, that kind of a thing? Is this the only way to get the minimum use out of the site, and so we're not taking property? There might be a number of questions we can raise, you know?
That's what I was thinking, something along those lines, not necessarily using the exact same test at the ZBA, but questions structured in the same type of format. I guess the next question then would be, who makes that determination? You know, they answer the questions, who do they present it to? The planning board, the ZBA, us?
Well, right now, everything goes, there's certain things that go to the building inspector, but they're minor, I think. Most likely be the planning board at this stage.
Yeah, and they've handled things like this before, just with, like, the Ralupa cases that we end up having come in and making certain findings. So I think maybe if we, we'll talk with Dennis and Valerie and kind of put together what we think from hearing from the board tonight and previously, kind of a balancing test, but not really a balancing test. I have to craft it a little bit further, not doing so tonight on the spot, but come-
No, I agree with you, I, you know, that's what I'm thinking, I'm just not sure that, what that would look like, but you know, we also have to be careful not to craft it in such a way that the planning board in a similar fashion that they, as you said, Dennis, perhaps punted it to us to clarify, that they would just automatically punt it to the ZBA without knowing exactly what to do with it. We have to give it to them in a way that they can use it, work with it, and do something with it without having to refer it out.
And don't get me wrong, I didn't mean that derogatory punting, it's just-
No, I understand.
It's not easy, it's not easy to come up with a solution here, this is a tough one, and they, they thought that, it's your law, so tell them how, but if, and they want the, they want the ability to judge it the way you intended to judge, but they said, how do we judge it? How do we, it's a difficult one. So we'll work with, you know, with MPV and with Kelly's office and try to get you something.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks, put your head to it.
Okay. I already talked about the point of measurement from the stream, that one.
I'm sorry, Dennis, before you move off of that one, where, other than the Fulton County example you came up with for that, was there anything else out there that's already passed anywhere?
There may be, there are a number of other overlays that have been approved in the county. I don't know, Natalie, did you see anything else in your research or can we look through those?
I'd have to check back again, I can't recall any off the top of my head.
Yeah, we found that one, we thought it was a pretty good one.
I like it too, you know, if there's others that we can compare it to and come up with the, you know, some form of our own, but that's fine too. I like it, just wanted to know if there's anything else.
Alright, we'll take a look. There's a section in the overlay zone that provide, provides guidelines for the planning board's review of applications for development within the buffer zone. And the planning board agrees, and they can establish requirements when someone works in a buffer zone, but they also recommend that it be expanded to include requirements for the people to maintain whatever they allow to encroach in the buffer area. For example, if we said that you can encroach, but only with a hardy stand of grass, which has some filtering ability for water running, running off of it, that we don't want it to go into disrepair, become a dirt field that has erosion and sediment. So they want to have a requirement for the buffer area being maintained and approved, have the authority for inspections, and require that it be included in a special permit renewal so they can further ensure compliance. One way to ensure compliance is to tell someone your special permit relies on this, and there'll be inspections, and it's subject to review. Kelly's office has fashioned something now for our special permits, which requires after one year that it come back with a report from the planning board as to whether it's being satisfied, and thereafter it's an automatic renewal, except where the planning, where the building inspector finds a problem. He can report it at any time to the, to the planning board, and they can consider the special permit again. So I, hopefully I said that correct, Kelly, but that's what we're doing, yes, I'm getting a nod.
Sorry, I keep forgetting I'm on mute, because I'm taking notes, and I just keep talking, and it pops up saying, you're on mute.
Just two other things, and I'll finally be done. The planning board considered some general comments, and one is the consideration of the applicability of applications that are already before the board for grandfathering. Just in terms of the application itself, what falls under this, what would fall under this law? They suggested that all applications that have concluded seeker be grandfathered and exempt from the provisions whenever you adopt. And the last one is the, that to compare the impacts and compatibility with the net lot area code revisions that you just adopted, they just wanted those considered and to see what that would have any impact on this. And that was it.
Great summary.
Note the sarcasm with summary, Dennis.
Yeah.
It's a very long law, so having comments back-
This, we gotta get it right the first time, this is a-
Yeah, I mean, there's, you, as the board knows, there are always things you can't anticipate, there's always changes that you end up having to be made, but as long as you try and catch them, and, you know, that's really the purpose of getting the planning board's input, having work sessions, getting all your consultants, so that you can try and catch as many as you can in the beginning, because you can never predict how creative some applications are, and then trying to react to that, and you don't realize they're gonna read one sentence one way, Gary reads it another way, and we read it a third way, so.
That's why I'd like as much objective language as possible, like with the tests that we were talking about earlier. That's where it becomes important.
And one other thing, I don't want to just paint this as a certain picture, I mean, it's gonna protect water quality, and that's, that's your goal, alright? But it does impact properties, alright? If you think about a 100-foot buffer zone on each side of a river, waterway that's on that map, I mean, that's wider than the throughway running through and up there. So there are some restrictions on properties, you should understand, they're, you know, with the goals of this in mind, but you will probably hear from property owners, some of which may object.
And there are the opportunities under, this is in the zoning code, there are opportunities for a property owner to apply to the ZBA, as they would under any dimensional requirement in your zoning code. So, at the, you know, I could go into the whole history of why zoning boards were created, but I won't, you get the gist.
Rick did that a while ago, we're good.
I feel like it is always helpful and handy, though, and I have to hold back.
But, existing COs, the things with, things that have existing COs wouldn't be a problem.
Well, it depends on your grandfather, go ahead.
No, that's, that's what I was gonna say, so I think that there does need to be specific grandfathering provisions, similar to what you just did with net lot area to set forth, and make sure it's clear, if somebody comes back in, they may have, they're going to have to comply with the law, but for things that are currently existing, or for projects that have reached a certain point, you know, those are things that we would try and put in to clarify.
I think that's only fair, because that would have the least amount of impact on existing structures and houses. Hey, look, there's spillways and streams that flow through people's backyards that, you know, they have pools within 20 or 30 feet of a stream or something like that. You can't go and ask somebody to remove their pool or remove their deck, because it now fits within, or it doesn't fit within, rather, a new overlay. So that's just, you know, of course, my opinion, but I think it's only fair.
One of them.
What was that, his system, sorry?
I'm one of them, my pool's not too far.
Is that right?
I'm not moving it, damn it.
I didn't know that, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking of you. Or maybe I was, I was trying to help you. Alright, so Dennis, that ended your comments, right?
Yes.
Okay, Natalie, anything to add to your colleague? You're muted.
Alright, that's what I was trying to fix that. No, I think Dennis went over it in detail, his summary was very good. So I don't have anything to add, other than that one definition, I started thinking back on it when I was looking to how to measure the buffer width, and I remember a lot of those were very brief, like vague, as far, you know, top of bank, and then, you know, it varies, like we were talking about, and this one-
And this one, the one that we provided to you, I thought was more specific and also gave a little bit more, like a descript on how that could vary, so how you should measure it at different parts, so.
Yeah, I like that example, I think it's a great example of how to do it right. Okay, Valerie?
Yes, so we were asked to provide a report on the impacts of the proposed local law on the historic and archaeological resources and the consistency of the comprehensive plan. And so basically, I'm sure you all received the report. Basically, the summary is that while you do have historic, you know, nationally registered or short-registered places within the proposed over, protection overlay district and you do have archaeologically sensitive areas, it is our opinion that the proposed overlay district will not result in any impacts on the historic and archaeological resources in the proposed overlay district boundary, mostly because of the fact that it's not going to result, the overlay district itself is not going to result in a subsurface disturbance nor is it actually going to affect any alteration or destruction of part, or part of a site of a property that actually has, you know, historical resources located on it. Further, the comprehensive plan, your comprehensive plan specifically identifies goals and recommendations that protect Woodbury's water, water sources, natural resources such as the stream corridors, steep slopes, scenic views, floodplains, wetland systems and you, and unique ecosystems. There's also a goal in there to protect groundwater and all water bodies acting as an aquifer recharge area and that the village should obtain, and that you, acknowledging that you obtain nearly all of your water sources from groundwater. And then also there's a goal in, within the comprehensive plan to protect and collect and store surface groundwater through best available technologies. So as you go through the comprehensive plan even further, it specifically really highlights the fact that because you have these groundwater aquifers, that it is important to protect the water quality of Woodbury's lakes and streams. It also specifically identifies particularly those with the aquifer recharge areas and it even identifies for the village of Woodbury to look into potentially some sort of legal protection of these areas. So in essence, in your comprehensive plan does support the overlay district that's being proposed. That was my simple little report.
Thank you.
Actually, that's very important. I had talked to Valerie a few weeks ago about this. You had previously received a number of comments, the first go-around from the public, about whether or not there is consistency with the comprehensive plan. So we talked to Valerie about providing a report in that regard. Obviously, you always get people who say there's conflicting goals. One says protect the environment and one says promote the economy. So we wanted this board to be provided with information so you are taking a hard look as to whether this local law is consistent with the comprehensive plan and, and that's, Valerie just said that she found that it was.
That's good, happy to hear that. Okay, so I think that covers comments from all of the consultants. Board members?
I'm good.
Tara shook her head no, Jesus said he's good. Oh, Chris is there, Chris?
I'm lying. Yeah, sorry, I joined late, I was just trying to get caught up a little bit and I kind of heard the end, so I'm glad it kind of meets and then works in conjunction with a comprehensive plan. And I think this is something that we really, you know, need to kind of move forward to protect the resources and the water supply, not only the supply of drinking water, but the, the recreational supplies of water as well in the village. So I think this is something we really should move forward with and try to streamline as fast as we can.
Okay, okay, Andrew, do you have any?
I got nothing else, Mr. Mayor, nothing.
Okay. Because our comments here tonight are going to shape what we do with this law. So this was, this is a good opportunity to ask questions with the consultants while they're all in one virtual room. All right, so I guess with that said then, if, if no other board members have any comments or questions other than what we've already covered tonight, next steps are going to be that Dennis and Natalie are gonna work with Valerie and Kelly to try and craft a, a map, an accurate map that we can work with and use in the law, correct? We have a public hearing coming up.
You had your public hearing at the.
I'm picking up the other one, yeah.
Yeah, no, we, I have to get to a revised version, like I said, I'm gonna get it to you next week. If I do have additional questions regarding direction, I'll reach out to everyone by email. If necessary, we can have another attorney-client meeting. But I got a lot of direction tonight and it seems like the board is on board with everything that Dennis has said and that Valerie has said, so we'll be preparing documents. Sorry, Andrew and Jesus have floating heads right now. So we'll, we'll get you something so that you can review that for your meeting and also so you can understand the changes that are being made and they would be responsive, in response to comments raised by this board and comments raised by your consultants.
Terrific, all right, I look forward to final drafts and reans on everything and moving forward with this, this is great. All right, so with nothing further, I guess we can adjourn, everyone good?
Thank you all.
Getting thumbs up across the board.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night all.
Thank you, Tim.
Well, we adjourned, we adjourned the regular meeting.
Oh, okay, so you're just in.
This is a work session.
Better for Desiree if I could just have a motion so that I can.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the work session? Okay, that was Andrew. That was Tara with the second, any discussion? What was that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good night, everybody, have a nice weekend, everybody.
All right, everyone, enjoy.
All right, I'll talk to you guys tomorrow.
You're the best.
All right.